Hey Karina, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Awesome. You got a rookie running the Zoom, so if something goes goofy, you gotta raise your hand or talk to me or something. Let me know.
Okay, sounds good. Sorry I can't be there in person. I've been sick all week.
Yeah, I hope you feel better soon.
Thank you.
I'm gonna mute this for a minute till we get going.
That's, that's the rule. Okay, let's call the Nibley City Planning Commission tour for August 8th, 2024. Okay, here at the City Hall, welcome all the visitors who are attending. Attendances are myself, Brett Swenson. You have Ken Scott.
Karina. Karina.
Thanks, Karina. We also have our city manager, Justin Vaughn, and Taylor Kilpak from the city. I asked for general consent to approve the agenda in the minutes from our last meeting on June 27th.
My question is.
We don't need it. Just say, alright. Okay, thank you. First item on the agenda is a public hearing ordinance 24-10. Development agreement with Stokes Nature Center for the construction of an outdoor learning space in nature park on parcel 030040011. Located at 99 West, 2600 South. Setting forth conditions and standards for its construction, including exemptions to requirements for the inclusion of public trails and the dedication of water shares or rights. Justin, want to introduce that?
Yeah, thank you. First of all, thanks for letting me be here. Guys, sorry you guys got to roll with the B team today. Levi and Tom both had things they needed to be to, so you guys get me. Which I'm excited, I should make a bigger effort to come out and spend time with you guys, so I apologize. And if there's ever anything I can do to help you guys out, by all means, please let me know. But I will give a brief introduction to the Stokes Nature Center Development Agreement. As you guys are aware, back in June, I believe, you guys saw a concept plan for this development, which is really an outdoor classroom in nature park. It sits on about 9.77 acres of property. About 99 West, 2600 South, right there by Ridgeline, across just to the west of the Ridgeline High School. Kind of that little corner property there. And if you recall, one of the, you guys approved the site plan with the condition that a development agreement must be entered into and reviewed by both Planning Commission and the City Council. And that's why this item is before you tonight. So you all have a copy of the agreement in the box or in the teams, excuse me. And part of the reason for the water issue is the developer would like to provide their own irrigation water and shares are limited to just the culinary needs. So you know, the development agreement points out that no culinary water may be used for outside irrigation, which I believe they're not intending to do at all anyway. The reason for the exception to the trail, as was explained last time, was because the grant has issues with public access and due to the nature of, or due to literally the nature of the area and what they want it to be. So in addition, there's, 2600 South is an arterial roadway and we need to make sure that we have the adequate right of way to provide for an 80-foot wide arterial road. We talked about the post-construction stormwater agreements, which will be worked out, and the developer to provide a new meter outside the swell in the PU. So these are kind of the main points of the agreement. This is the concept plan that you guys saw. I don't believe anything has changed there. And so staff recommendation is approval of 24-10. Any questions I could answer?
Okay, thank you. Before we open the public hearing, these rules will apply to all of our public. All comments should be delivered from the platform. Speakers must state their name and address for the record. The chair reserves the right to limit speaking time depending on how long it goes. I don't see that to be a problem tonight. But we will see. Also, comments can be submitted to the chair in written form during the public comment period for inclusion in the record. The public hearing is a time for the public to be heard. As a general rule, commissioners will not directly answer or engage questions posed during the public hearing. Staff will record the questions and staff and commissioners will allow those questions, will answer those questions if readily available once the hearing is concluded. If answers are not readily available, staff will provide written response. With that, we'll open the public hearing. Alright, we'll close the public hearing and then go on to item number two, discussion consideration. Recommendation for ordinance 24-12. Development agreement with Stokes Nature Center for the construction of an outdoor learning space in nature park on parcel 030040011. Located at 99 West, 2600 South. Setting forth conditions and standards for its construction, including exemptions to requirements for the inclusion of public trails and the dedication of water shares or rights. And just for the record, Commissioner Livo, my bow, or bow, is avoiding. Do you have any questions, concerns? Maybe not.
No, I think the only question from the very beginning was obviously the water shares. Whether how that's gonna work out at the end, assuming staff has been, proponents worked through those issues and feel good about that process.
Commissioner, I will point out that I believe the document in front of you does have those numbers blanked still. We received the culinary use from the applicant just right before, or right after the report was put together through the box. But we will make sure, maybe that could be a condition that, you know, the engineer approved those when it goes to City Council.
Okay. Commissioner Brown.
It looks good to me. Thank you. It's exciting that this will be in potential to be in Nibley.
Okay, motion.
Chairman, Vice Chair. I motion to approve ordinance 24-10 development agreement Stokes Nature Center with the condition that staff reviews and approves the culinary.
And outdoor.
And outdoor, excuse me. Water education does provided by Stokes Nature Center.
Second, any further discussion? One favor.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Right, we move on to item number three. Ordinance 24-08, amending 12.12.040 mixed residential zone RM including adjustments to maximum density, required open space, and adding parcel 03227, 0003 located at 1301 West, 2600 South to the RM application map.
Yes, please. And if it's okay, maybe I could just explain, this background is, it's gonna kind of blend together with three and four. They're kind of really one issue, if you will, but they're different steps that need to happen in order for them to be able to happen. So the three, four, and actually five and six are two items that, one is an amendment to the subdivision code and one is a rezone for the piece of property. And the reason that's a little weird is that the, the code needs to be changed in this case to make this property eligible for the RM zone. This is the only zone in Nibley City that this sort of thing really applies to. The RM zone was a zone that was created to compete, if you will, with ordinances and code in Logan City when we were trying to get the Campbell piece of property. So it was very specific to that piece of property and the council wanted to maintain control of that and make sure that anything did get out of control there that they didn't really wanna, wanna have happen. So what needs to happen is the, this property needs to be put into the code. Okay, so that's one of the things that needs to happen. And at the same time, the applicant has requested a few other changes to the RM zone, so we're gonna go through all those as well. But that's the actual code and then there's the rezone. So kind of two separate issues. So specifically speaking to the residential zone or the code, the Weston Nelson Farms has submitted an application to rezone that property. So this is a concept plan and it's important to remember tonight that we are not approving this plan in any way. This is just a concept. This is an idea. This hasn't been, the nuts and bolts of this have not been checked with the current code. This is to give you an idea of what could be close to, to meeting the RM zone. And I believe this is the first time you guys have seen this, correct? Okay, thank you. So the summary of proposed changes, so the first one is, is the important one if you want to rezone the property. So that would be to add parcel 032270003 to the RM application map as an eligible area for the RM zone. The applicant then has also requested to increase the allowable density from two units per net developable acre to 12 units per developable acre, removing the word net. And we're gonna go back through each one of these in specific detail and talk about each one. But to, they've also requested to reduce the required open space from multifamily or mixed single family and multifamily from 35% to net developable acreage to 20%, so a decrease of 15%. They have also requested to, a variance to the street design standards and master plan not to require the 2500 South Road, which is a master plan road. So going back into a little bit of details there, the parcel, oh, we had a map there, sorry. Making this parcel eligible does coincide with the future land use map. This area is designated as commercial to medium-high density residential and the RM zone does support this designation. So moving on to the second, I guess, well, we'll keep moving. So the second request was to increase the allowable density from 10 units per net developable acre to 12 units per developer, removing the word net. So this really is a kind of semantics and how we measure things. This, where is? So I apologize, I mean Levi put this together, so I may have to hop around a little bit. But this is a, this is a picture that tied, that is depicting how it is measured. And really the net develop, net density, you remove the roadways, the open space and the things that are required before you calculate how many units can go into the piece of property where as opposed to gross density is just the entirety of it, including the roads and, and, and the open spaces or anything else that needs to be dedicated. So this isn't the easiest way for me to, I, I think of like a 10-acre parcel. And if, if you can only put, if it's just for the sake of explaining it, one unit per acre. If you have a 10-acre parcel and you measure by gross, then you can put two home or 10 houses on that 10-acre piece of property. Did I say that right? 10-acre parcel with one acre develop, developable units per acre. You could put 10 on there regardless of how many roads or how many parks or, or what was going on. Whereas if the other way, net would be, you could, if you have a 10-acre, but by the time you put your roads and your parks and whatever else is going, you might only get eight houses. So the difference between net and gross typically is anywhere from 20 to 30% increase by going with the gross. And you know, staff is a little, is honestly, you know, opposed to this change, not anything to do with the density other than net is how all the other subdivision codes written. So it's just a matter of, you know, how we measure. And you know, if, if the, if the total number needs to be adjusted to, to be equal to, you know, if that makes sense, that like we're not, the, the issue here isn't with the number. It's just the word net versus gross and how all the other codes have net. So. So this, the other request was to, let's see. Yeah, we kind of covered all that stuff. So the next one was to reduce the required open space for, from 35 down to 20. And this was patterned after our other existing RPUD ordinance. And so we also are a little bit opposed to this because it's been, it's proven effective in preserving open space on the, on the few of the developments that we have right now. Including, if I could jump to Ridgeline Park, you know, they were able to have, provide that sort of open space and that does not include the actual Ridgeline Park part. This is just their stuff on the, on the property that they developed and not in the park, if that makes sense. I believe that was an additional 17 acres, is that right? Okay, thank you. And so the, the density in the Ridgeline Park was about, is 7.6 units per net developable acre. If you did the gross acre, it would be about 6.1. Firefly Estates had 132 units on 20 acres, so that's about 8.3 units per net developable acre or 6.6 units per gross acre. Nibley Meadows is 6.3 per net developable and five per gross. So we, we, we just felt that, you know, you know, based on the other developments that have come in, that the 35 has worked and they've been able to make it pencil out or whatever they needed to do to make that work. Let's see, the last one is 2500 South. So there's been a lot of discussion with staff around 2500 South. And you know, this specifically co, staff doesn't feel that this is the right place to, to accomplish this. Similar to how a variance was requested from the master plan of the trails, the trails master plan with the, the last item we just had with Stokes. We feel that, you know, this would be better served in either a development agreement or through the process of actually amending the master plan rather than writing it into code, if that makes sense. Excuse me, should've got the water. So you know, we believe there is a process, you know, if, you know, if it is required, desired of the council and the, the planning commission to remove that, then you know, staff is willing to talk about that. We just felt that this wasn't the right place for that particular item. So this is just a little bit of history that Levi threw in here to show you that maybe some of the things that they're requesting here are, are things that you, you guys as a planning commission discussed and talked about. Some of you may have been here, may not have been here, I'm not sure on timescales of when, when you were all here. But this is a list of things. Sorry, Brett, we hand me one of the waters. Thank you. This is a list of recommendations that the planning commission made to the City Council at the time that the RM zone was last looked at. And, excuse me. Most of these are the things that, you know, it was, was recommended by the planning commission to the City Council, but that they were not adopted. Part of the reason they were not adopted specifically to the discussion about the units per acre was the, there, the, the discussion happened simultaneously with the TDR ordinance, if I remember right. And when we did the TDR ordinance, part of the 10 units per net developable acre came through the process of them calculating and looking at and trying to figure out what, what would incentivize a developer to actually utilize TDR. To go out and try to purchase those development, those development rights from other places to preserve open space. So, so part of, part of, you know, staff's opposition to changing the density isn't necessarily, again, the density because through TDR, they could actually get more density than they're actually asking for. But if, if you recall, when we were talking about the TDR, if we just zone it, we, we, we cut off the incentive or any sort of hope that anybody will utilize the TDR ordinance, if that makes sense. Thank you, Mayor. And, and again, a lot of those things kind of, kind of tweaked this ordinance, but that were based off the TDR. I apologize for hopping around all over in this, but you know. In essence, you know, you know, the staff recommendation is to change the code to allow this piece of property to be RM eligible, but not the other requests that were made by the applicant. Is that clear? So, so that would be a recommendation and again, just, just to point out that you're not approving the actual plat or concept plan. So unless there's any questions, that's all I have.
So do you feel like you've covered all the remaining public hearings?
I, yes, sir.
Okay, with that, we will open the public hearing. By the way, do we have, do you have a computer?
I believe so, yes.
Alright, anyone, anyone want to speak in the public hearing?
I thought you were voting on this.
We'll, we'll be happy to answer questions to press and rebuttal in, in the discussion.
Okay, thanks. All right, we'll close the public hearing and move on to item. Number four and, uh, same, same issue, uh, this is public hearing for ordinance twenty-four national nine zone, rezoned parcel, uh, located at thirteen oh one west, twenty-six hundred south, we're on residential R two to mixed residential RM. Uh, Justin's already explained what's happening here, so with that, we will open this public hearing.
Yeah, I, I don't think we need to read it, it, but it will be included in the record.
Right, we close that public hearing and move on to item number five. Discussion and consideration, recommendation for ordinance twenty-four dash zero eight and nineteen point twelve point zero four zero, mixed residential zone RM, including adjustments to maximum density, required open space and adding parcel zero three two two seven zero 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 three, located at thirteen oh one west, twenty-six hundred south to the RM application map. Okay. What's your question, your comments?
My main question was, um. We're geared toward the, the road, I wanted to hear more on. Steph's ideas or thoughts on the pros and cons of removing that connection. There was a lot of discussion of.
Okay, so this is a, this is a picture of the master plan and, um, you know, it, it, as it stands right now, staff's job is to make sure the master plan is followed. So as, as our, uh, re, as our responses to concept plans and things that come in, we've, we've, we've indicated to the applicant that, you know, staff is, is bound by the master plan and that we, uh, you know, are gonna issue comments as such. Now, um. Again, uh, taking aside just for a second, staff's opinion of whether twenty-five hundred south is even needed, uh, staff just felt that this isn't the right place to make that call in the code. It should be in a development agreement or it should be an amendment to the master plan. Um, now, in regards to, you know, staff's recommendation on whether roads should be there or not be there, um, you know, staff believes that it is a valuable road and that it, that it should be there. It provides, uh, secondary, uh, mobility around through the area. Twenty-six hundred south is a pretty, uh, substantial road and will continue to, uh, always, uh, grow and have more and more and would just believe that twenty-five hundred south provides a secondary route and an access and just, excuse me, provides more connectivity through the area. Excuse me. So we've also, um, well, I mean, that, that's, that's really about it.
I, I forgot to check the, uh. Trail master plan, um, regardless of the road, is there a plan, I don't know if there's notes of, a kind of trail going through that area?
That's a great question. Off the top of my head, I cannot remember for certain either, um, but that, that kind of stuff would come up for sure when we actually, uh, have a plat submitted for, uh, an, an application for the plat. But I, I wanna say there is on twenty-six hundred south, but I, off the top of my head, I can't remember.
Well, I can, I can answer that if you like. Oh, so master planned in the community and adding city master plan is, there are a couple trails, so it's a twenty-six hundred south trail, there's also one that runs north-south. There you go. So there is a master plan trail along twenty-six hundred south, there's also a north-south trail plan, uh, through what is going to be the future thirteen hundred west road, uh, it's, it's the north-south green, uh, dotted road there that would be through the middle of our development, uh, and, and right now we are proposing a park in the northeast corner of the development and that's part of the reason why we want to argue against the road. Um, among other things, we'd be happy to address with you guys and why we don't think the road is, is needed and why we think it's appropriate in this application. Uh, but there is a trail, you can see on the north side of that park area there, there's a trail that will connect in and we've got a trail that runs along the remainder of twenty-five hundred south into the commercial area and like I said, the thirteen hundred east road, which is our north-south road, um, there. And those are all per, per city master plan.
So, I don't know, initial thoughts, I don't necessarily have an issue with the increase in density to twelve, um, because it's still, it's what was originally planned with the lowering for, uh, allowing the promotion of TDR. Um, I think removal of net does go against that. Um, so I think further discussion, I think we need to be had to. The open space, I'm not sure. I, I think if, if we have the RPU D and it's disassembled after that, um, I don't think we should be game. But at the same time. It feels odd to discriminate against different housing.
Yeah, um, so I just think it's important we all remember we're not here to review the plan as, with really any merit that we're looking here from, or as a community, excuse me. I really don't have any problems, like mentioned or about mentioned about density in general. Um, I just feel like, I mean, so the council went through and sort of reorganized that ordinance just two years ago and I don't even know, we haven't had any examples of it in practice really, since then, so it's difficult for us to really measure its merits since it's sort of new in the grand scheme of things. Um, and so it's, like I said, it's difficult to really, you know, redesign an ordinance in one night when, when, when it, when it's one application essentially that, you know, is asking for a change in the ordinance and really even having seen it in practice, when realistically we can reach that density by either TDR or just a development grid. So I'm just trying to generally curious if it's just more of a site specific thing that your plans, granted we can't really see this because it could change tomorrow, right? If it's something about the nature of the, the site itself, it's just not fitting the ordinance or what your opinion is as to why the, our current ordinance isn't fitting what you want to do? Maybe elaborate on that if you don't?
Yeah, absolutely. So there's a couple of issues or items in there to address is this, as you guys very well may know, is we, we've been working with the city for about five years, sorry, it's a five year. And the challenge is, is just like you guys don't want to go and make an ad hoc change to, to zoning ordinance is, we've been working with city staff for a number of years using certain metrics and these are some of those metrics we're doing. And so in the same vein, we've, we've had this design and it's presented to planning commission city council, we don't want to go then also through a whole redesign process because during the process of this, the city has introduced the, the, the transfer zones. So, um, to be honest with you, the, the twenty percent is kind of that roots for the star. Um, part of our, our puzzle piece here, I think we can be more realistic and find a middle ground with that one for sure. Um, part of the other discussion there is, is we're using over a gross twenty percent, um, because it's easier to calculate when you're looking at an undesigned or unfinished subdivision, because that number's constantly changing, hard to reach from a design standpoint. If, oh, we've got to add twenty more feet of road, well, that changes a little bit this and so you're always kind of doing this recalculation. So that's why we're using these gross numbers, but we would be happy to work with city staff and with you guys in city council to find the net equivalent of what we're asking for and introduce that into, if you guys would introduce that into your approval or denial of that, we would be certainly happy to, to discuss those. The other part with the open space is the examples that the city's brought up, why those are wonderful developments. I really do like the trans, the, the density transfer. Um, I've lived out of state, lived in Madison, Wisconsin for about eight years and there's a lot more green space and riverways there because it's a lot wider space and I love that we have trails and I can go running and my kids have this place to do that. So I love what Nibley's doing with that and I like it. The challenge with that is the, the developments that were shown, I mean, the biggest one is seventy-six acres. It's a lot easier to hide and pocket large areas of open space with that. And the way the city calculates that is, again, we're not looking at this as approval for this development, but when you look at how we calculate open space, you can't count the front yards and backyards, the areas in between townhomes. And so when you're a smaller overall area, it's really hard to get that larger open space number, because it's, it just doesn't math right, right? But when you have a bigger space, you can clump all your density together and then pocket a, a larger park like those other developments have. So it's really easy to do in large developments and that's what that code's written for. It doesn't quite work with this smaller development of this size.
Yeah, understandable and, and honestly, like I mentioned before, I don't really have an issue with density, especially when you look beyond the scope of what we're looking at on the screen and what it means in the bigger vision of what this area could potentially be, right?
Yeah.
So that's not my issue. Like I said, my issue is, I mean, if we're gonna bring in the road, it's another point of conversation, right? We mentioned this in, uh, Justin's mention as well, it's just difficult in one meeting to address all those things and realistically, that does need its own, it deserves its own review, right? In terms of amending the master plan, if we're gonna be talking about rewriting an ordinance, we can't really, in my opinion, appropriately be doing that one evening.
No, and we plan to make that same application to the trans, to the transportation master plan and ask for the variance there. Uh, what we did is in this particular zone, there is a line item that specifically talks to street master plans and so because it's in there, we noted that as part of our application. Were not in there, we wouldn't even address it as part of this, we would make that separate application for the transportation master plan as suggested and as will happen.
Okay. I think that's, Dave, I said my thoughts.
Commissioner Brown.
Um, I'm just, I'm looking at, um, some of the material for the meeting and the applicant statement says, what is the need, talks about the need for the proposed zone change and one of the questions is what will the public benefit if the zone change is granted? Affordable housing at a lower starting point? So do you, do you anticipate that this will be the case that if, if there's a change of the zoning and, and all of that, that there will be townhomes at more, a more affordable starting point?
That's a, that's a loaded question, to be honest. Um, I'm, I'm doing it, all right, so I, I didn't introduce myself and I apologize, but my name's Trent Williams, I'm a professional land surveyor, original science engineer, the project manager, working with Al, the applicant here on this. I'm doing a, a three hundred acre, one thousand minute development in Weber County right now and as part of the requirements for that development, we actually had to on our subdivision plot, our final subdivision plot, put attainable homes on the plot. There's certain requirements that the county's requiring, say, hey, these have to fit this, this affordable attainment, we're actually calling that out and there's certain restrictions in the development agreement for that to make that happen. What is affordable is a very difficult question, but when we look at, um, the cost of land, a single family lot, even if we're a small patio home, is significantly more expect, expensive than a townhome. And so if we can get the density in there, all of a sudden, all of the costs go. There's a certain cost of linear, per linear foot of road. So the more homes you can get on a road, the, the less of burden each home has to pay for the road and infrastructure that goes in there. Um, and so there's certain ways, again, not looking at, at approval of what we laid out, but there's certain reasons why we've laid this out with double townhomes and things like that, private alleys, they're less expensive to build, which they create a more affordable product. Um, again, affordable is a very loaded question, I think we all understand that, but I hope you get the, the spirit in which we're trying to approach this, is if we can pack it in a few, we all, and, and maximize the, the spaces as well as we can, the cost per unit goes down because the cost for construction goes down and cost for the facilities.
All right, thank you.
Okay, um, thoughts on this, um, I, Justin, tell me if I'm, it's reading what you said. I generally agree with what you, what you recommended, that, tell me if I'm wrong, that you're not in support of increasing the density and not decreasing the open space generally for consistency. And I agree with that.
Correct.
We've gotta be consistent with our codes, with our developments. Also, with the TDR complex, that's kind of where I'm at almost.
If I could real quick, I will say, you know, i- it's a fair point on the size a little bit, because, you know, RPD, RPU D was originally intended for, uh, forty acres and larger. So, um, I mean, it's, it's a fair point.
Uh, what was the acre tonne of the site?
Uh, the whole site is.
We're at eighteen, I remember correctly.
The, the entire subdivision is about sixty, is that right? Whole subdivision, so.
Well, the commercial included, this is just, this is the only residential.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, also, I, I agree that, uh, the road issue may, maybe, you may have a really good point on that and not saying you're right or wrong, but I don't, I agree this is not the place to decide that, I should, I should go, uh, you should revise the master rule, uh, in my, in my view, okay? It's probably great, you have, may have a great plan, just, this isn't the time to deal with that, in my, my view. Um, also, I support changing the code to make the, uh, the zone change.
I, I, I think the zone change makes sense. It's, and we have the commercial development right there, it's close to highway access, it's a really good spot. If you're looking for higher density, that's one of the best spots, I think, that you can put.
Here, come. Just add two seconds here a little bit and, um, Al Bingham, I see Nelson Farms, um, you should go back to the, the design layout, just for your information, that, uh, density is probably gonna increase for a little bit. The reason of it is, is down there on the southeast corner, uh, Church Jesus Christ, the Lamb of the Saints, flows to the, uh, chapel there. So, um, they are interested to get started on that, uh, as fast as we can, we can, it's work with the city on these things and so. Anyway, what the proposal is and what the body is, is the, the open space near that par, would actually open up a little bit more because, uh, you know, they need a certain amount of acreage and we've got. So anyway, that number, you know, that we'll have to finalize that number with the plaid, so, anyway.
Justin, why don't you go over your recommendation?
Okay, so right now, we're specifically talking about item number five. We're talking about a recommendation for ordinance twenty-four oh eight, which is an amendment to the, uh, mixed residential zone. And so to summarize that, uh, staff recommends, um, let's write slide. So, um. Approval of ordinance twenty-four oh eight, amending nineteen twelve oh four oh, mixed residential zone, including adjustments to the maximum density required open space, adding parcel oh three two two seven oh oh three, located at thirteen oh one west, twenty-six hundred south, to the RM application map with the following conditions. One is that we limit the requested amendments to the, the code to adding the parcel to the RM application map as an eligible area. And then number two, the approved amendment does not constitute approval of any development plan, including the concept plan provided with the rezon and code change application. So if I could just summarize that real easy, you know, the staff recommends rezoning it, allowing, changing the code to allow the property to be in the RM zone, but to disregard the other requested amendments. Property to be in the RM zone, but to disregard the other requested amendments.
The TOD map. This area, I don't know if it was.
I do not believe. Well, you, you're making it a receiving area. That's what this action would do. Wait, 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 no, 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 I'm sorry. That's a great question. Let me uh, go look. Believe it is off of memory, but.
For point of clarification, receiving area means those are the areas that can get higher density.
Correct.
In this area, it can't possibly apply somewhere else. So to the point of, if I can. We complete that thought, maybe I, I appreciate it. I didn't have that thought. This wasn't an eligible receiving area, then that, that's the question becomes a bigger discussion. Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate it, because I didn't think through that one.
Yeah, that's a good question. Testing my website skills. I believe you, but we'll look at it. So here's the property here. It is a receiving overlay area already. Thank you. Great question.
Yes. Mr. Vice Chairman, our motion to approve. Um, recommendation for ordinance twenty-four dash oh eight. Um, amending. The parcel number three, seven, oh, three. Oh, yeah, recommend. Um, to be uh. Applicable for the RM application map, um, with conditions, um, as I didn't invite to staff. Seven. I'll say that. Further discussion. All favor.
I.
Motion passes. Okay. Item number six. Discussion consideration and recommendation ordinance twenty-four dash zero nine, rezone parcel zero three two two seven zero 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 three. Okay, thirteen oh one west, twenty-six hundred south, and residential R two to mixed residential RM. Justin?
Nice, uh, same, same stuff. I just wanted to throw up the. Make sure to leave, I didn't have any other condition. Okay, so staff recommendation is approval of twenty-four dash oh nine, rezone parcel oh three two two seven oh oh three, located at thirteen oh one west, twenty-six hundred south, from residential R two to mixed residential. RM with the condition and findings below. Number one, the rezone does not go into effect until and unless NIBLIS City Code nineteen twelve oh four oh is amended to include the parcel oh three two two seven oh oh three as an eligible RM area. And number two, the rezone does not constitute approval of any development plan, including the concept plan provided with the rezon and code change application.
Also, motion to approve uh. Recommendation for, for, approved recommendation for nine, rezone parcel three two seven oh three, uh, from R two to RM, including the staff recommendations discussed.
Second. Thank you. We can put a discussion. All favor.
Hi.
Right, Mike?
I.
You should, it passes point zero. Still way past my time.
Shouldn't bite me more often.
Levi's the problem. Okay, I don't know, it's uh, staff important, actually.
Thank you, pictures, we appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, next time, you need to wear the blue shirt.
Is that why we named the extra summer as a park?
Yeah, maybe, you know.
You guys wired your coats, I got whatever I have.
You're right.
I, I, I'm sorry, I have nothing as staff report.
Um, sorry, I just have one question for Karina. Did you go to, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, I can hear you.
Okay.
I can hear you.
Were you able to attend all of the Bergen City training? Well, I mean, all of it.
I will, I'll email you. I was able to attend most of it.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Last time, I have, you guys got me a jacket.
Oh, yes, I don't know. I don't know where those ended up.
Oh, it's too big.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. I'd have to check in with Levi's, Levi's.
Will you do that?
Yeah.
No, I have a lot of re-logging.
Did?
I think it's retired.
Did you guys get your jackets?
So.
Or did you?